Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, good evening Mayor. Good evening Mayor, good evening Council members. My name is Terrell Green and I am the Scout Master for Troop 1154 here in Bloomfield, sponsored by Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church. This evening I brought with me several of our Boy Scouts and a couple of special guests who also serve and support the organization. Our Senior Patrol Leader, Diame Watson, First Class Scout, please raise your hands. Next to him, Davion Murray, Tenderfoot. Next, Gerald Blaze, Scout Tenderfoot. Tyler Albert, Scout Tenderfoot. Isaac Ray, Tenderfoot. And soon to be crossover, Malik Nelson, Weeblow II. That tall gentleman at the end is a very special guest and Diame would like to introduce him. Come on over, I mean, Davion, come on over.
I'll be introducing Mr. Lewis Rose, a veteran in the United States Army and a former Boy Scout representing the, well, saying the Scout Law. Also, our Assistant Scout Master.
Also, a very special guest who has joined us tonight, Mr. Anthony Jackson, a veteran of the United States Navy and also a former Boy Scout here in the town of Bloomfield. He will be our honored guest this year in the Memorial Parade and he'll be riding in the Boy Scout float. So I'd like to introduce you, Mr. Anthony Jackson. As you can see, we have a few veterans of the military who serve us. And one of the programs that the Boy Scouts are involved with every year is honoring our veterans on Memorial Day, Veterans' Day, and throughout the year. Recently, we put together a plot on the grounds of Bethel AME Church to honor veterans of foreign wars and especially those veterans of World War II, who we are running out of days to honor. In the congregation at Bethel, there were several members who had served in World War II and we are now down to our very last member who's still living. In addition to honoring our veterans, we do many service projects here in the town of Bloomfield. One in particular is our annual food drives. We also participate in activities and programs to build leadership skills. Our Scouts attend Scout University at the University of Massachusetts. We camp, we sail, we canoe, we hike. We do all those things that build character and leadership skills. And tonight, with just a few of us who are here, we just wanted to say thank you to the town of Bloomfield for all the support that you give us. We try to be involved with as many activities in town as possible, the fire departments, Annual Day, the Bloomfield Town Days, and we're continuing to try to develop the young men into leaders of the future. And tonight, they have an opportunity to say thank you to you because we know scouting is about service. And service to your community is not something to be taken lightly. It is better for them to learn to serve than it is to receive because then they can truly become the leaders that we want them to be. Diame, being our Senior Patrol Leader, has a lot of responsibility. He has to set the example for the younger guns, the younger ones, and he's done a fine and outstanding job. Diame is a sophomore at Windsor High School. And I'd like to thank our parents, who also came out tonight to be with us. And we have a small gift that we'd like to present to you. You'd like to thank, you'd like to thank you all for inviting us tonight. You know these young men have school tomorrow. But we also couldn't leave here without thanking one special member of the council, Mr. Rickford. Rickford served as our Cub Scout Master before he was a town council member. And we're sharing him with you because we expect him to come back at some point in time because he still has a son. They told me a long time ago, when I first became a Cub Scout Leader, my son was six years old. They gave me a yardstick and they said, "You have this much time to raise your son." That was 36 inches. They said, "That doesn't represent 36 years." They said, "Because you have to chop this down to 12 inches." I said, "Why?" He says, "Because the first 12 years are the most important years of his life. After age 12, it's very difficult for you to make an impression on his life." And so we took the yardstick and we cut it down to 12. He said, "But he's six years old now, so one through five is already gone." And so all we had was six through 12 to make an impression on their lives. My son now is a senior at Glastonbury High School and he's on his way to college. And some of the other young men who were members of our troop are now on their way to college. But we realize how important this responsibility is. And with your support and your encouragement, we'll continue to do the best job we can for the young people in this community. Thank you.
Wow. That was wonderful, right? Something new and different? Wonderful. Okay, so all our councilors are here except Counselor Goff and Counselor DeLorenzo. And Counselor Waterhouse, I'm very sorry. Right now, we have a presentation, an update from the Department of Public Works Building Committee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Mr. Chenk, the Public Works Building Committee has its genesis in a report from November 2014 prepared by Weston Sampson outlining many of the shortcomings, lack of facilities, number of problems that existed at our public works facility. The referendum of November 2016, a bond issue was approved to move forward to follow the advice and develop plans to correct, amend, and install new works at the public works building. Our first meeting was in January 2017. We're progressing to the point where we're virtually ready to go out to bid. And what we're going to do tonight, we have Mr. Jeff Alberti of the Weston Sampson will make a presentation showing our progress to date. And also with us, our construction manager, Mr. Gordon Sober of PDS, which is our construction manager. And he will address a number of things, including MBE requirements and where we stand in that issue. And after that, of course, we'll be open to any questions that you might have. So at this point, I'll introduce Mr. Alberti.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. My name is Jeff Alberti with Weston and Sampson. And I have a brief presentation. Am I okay here for you guys to see? I just wanted me, okay, yeah, hard copy. All right. Well, thank you. I wanted to start off this presentation with just a recap of what the project goals were for this project because that's really what was driving all of our efforts in preparing this Public Works Facility renovations and code improvements project. Really, the first goal that we identified was the need to develop renovations in additions to address the current code, safety, and operational efficiencies that existed throughout the facility. And with that, we obviously understand that we have a certain set amount that we need to meet, and that's the budget of $11,433,000. So throughout the process, we've kept our eye on the ball, really understanding what those code deficiencies are, safety issues, and operational efficiencies were, and really came up with a plan that we felt would meet all the requirements now and into the future within your budget. But in summary, and this goes back many years, we did do a comprehensive analysis of some of the deficiencies. And I just wanted to highlight some of the major elements that we were able to break them down into. The first being that the buildings currently do not comply with today's building codes. They were built at a much different time for a much different code. So it lacks systems like a sprinkler system, ADA accessibility, has inadequate egress and fire separations throughout the building as the operations have changed. We also took a look at the mechanical codes and the plumbing codes and we found that the facility didn't meet current codes for number fixture counts for proper male and female toilet facilities. Also, there's inadequate volume of water for the operations. We found the mechanical system needed upgrade to improve the ventilation, air exchanges, and carbon monoxide detection systems. We also focused in on some past OSHA and deep standards, some that included some OSHA and deep citations because the operations were outdated and didn't meet today's standards. Also focused in on the fueling facility and wash facilities that needed upgrade to meet those requirements. We kind of rounded out our assessment on the site security. It's a very expensive operation, has a lot of high-value equipment and materials, and we felt that there's a need to really protect that investment that you've all made in that operation by providing proper security throughout the site. And then finally, we took a look at the operations and identified all the efficiencies from inadequate storage areas to inadequate employee facilities to undersized maintenance areas. So through that process, we began by looking at what has been completed and what is underway. But before I get into that element, one of the things that we did identify was some of the deficiencies, and I wanted to just show you a couple of quick photographs. This is a photograph of the existing vehicle and equipment storage area. And as you can see, it's essentially jam-packed with vehicles. And if you look in the back of the slide, you can see the yellow wall. And if you keep your eye on that wall, because this building is so undersized, when the staff has to have their regularly mandated training with a large group, they actually have to pull all that equipment out, set up chairs and tables in the vehicle storage garage to try to get that staff together for the proper training. And this is primarily due to the change in operations and the growth. So there really was inadequate space to properly meet and train the staff. And another item that we felt was important to just touch on was the fact that this is a single-shift operation. However, they're there in some cases for many shifts during the storm events, and we know we've had quite a bit of those in the past few years. And it's important to keep that staff there, on staff, and be able to respond to the needs of the community. And sometimes they have to take a quick break and really what they, the only thing that they can do is set up a cot and a part storage room, and you see on the left, in the upper-right, in a hallway, in the center, right next to some file cabinets, and the bottom-right, actually, in a shower. So there's really inadequate space within the facility, and these were some of the items that we wanted to address through this process. So the work has been completed to date. We have completed schematic design as well as design development, so really advanced the drawings through the initial stages through and getting ready for our construction documents. Some of the things that we've completed are survey, hazardous materials investigation. We've done our subsurface geotechnical investigation. We've done an overall structural analysis of the building with the goal of trying to maximize and reuse that facility to control costs and use that to develop our overall building and site concepts. We've also gone through the permitting process, inland, wetlands, TPZ, and ZBA, and have completed that. And so currently, we're in the process of moving through the construction documents, preparing our final plans and specifications. Now, just to give you an overview of the facility and the project, I just wanted to touch on some highlights. This is an overall aerial view. You can see the developed area in the center, upper center part of your screen. That's where the existing 21 Southwood Drive facility is located. And there are really two parts to this, the first part being the development of that 21 Southwood Drive parcel outlined in red. And what that includes is office and employee facility additions as well as a vehicle maintenance addition, and I'll get into some of the details of that in a moment. And then maximizing the reuse of the existing facility again to control costs, and then also providing a new fueling facility as well as doing some site reconfiguration. As we add to the building and reconfigure the site, we're displacing some of the operations. And as a result, the next step in one of the proposed uses of the site would be to use the 30 Southwood Drive parcel. And that's shown in the bottom part of your screen for some of the items that have been displaced through the development of this initial phase. And that's for some paved yard areas, bulk material storage areas, some cold seasonal storage, as well as storage for snow and storm debris during the emergency situations throughout town. As we look a little bit closer at the 21 Southwood Drive parcel, you can see the aerial view here. And there are several existing buildings that are highlighted in yellow. And the goal here was to, again, protect those, maintain those, and reuse those. This is an overall site development plan. As you can see, the existing building shown in yellow in the two additions. The addition to the right, the long linear building, that's the office and employee facility space. And the addition to the left represents the vehicle maintenance operations. And you can also see in the bottom right, the proposed fueling facility. The area that's shaded in gray represents the new parking area as well as the circulation space, all with the goal of coming up with new parking and circulation to maintain a safe and efficient movement throughout the site. There's large vehicles that are constantly circulating through that site that we want to split off from the smaller privately-owned vehicles for safety purposes. We've also advanced the building, and this is an ISO showing the overall view, kind of a bird's-eye view of the facility. The building on the left represents the overall roof plan, and on the right is just a cross-section showing you the different uses of the space where the large open volumes represent where vehicles are going to be stored. And you can see the other areas with walls represent occupied employee spaces. The two additions that I mentioned earlier are outlined in red on the left-hand side. As we move a little bit closer and take a closer look at the layout, it's a very efficient construction type, and we really try to come up with easy column lines to help maximize the efficiencies and minimize the costs. And you can see in the upper part of the screen is the proposed addition for the offices' employee facilities. That'll address a lot of those conditions I showed you earlier. And the bottom right is the vehicle maintenance addition, where you're maintaining a multimillion-dollar fleet within the community, and then maximizing the reuse of the existing facility to conduct renovations, to have proper locker shower toilet facilities for both male and female employees. This is an overall building rendering showing a couple of views. The view in the upper part would be as you enter the site. Just a couple of takeaways are that we really wanted to match the existing architecture, the materials that are there. We didn't want it to look like, stand like a sore thumb, essentially. We wanted to match it as best as we could. We also wanted to control costs by making sure that our volumes were appropriate for the type of use. So in the front, where you have offices and employee facilities, you have the lower mass. And then you can see in the back portion, there's a much higher volume. That's where the vehicle maintenance operations take place. That's where they're raising dump bodies, lifting large vehicles, so you have higher volumes. And you can see in the bottom, again, that relationship where on the left-hand side is the vehicle maintenance, the right-hand side is the office and employee facilities, and really controlling costs by managing those volumes. You'll notice we have a lot of windows, we have a lot of translucent panels. The goal there is to get as much natural daylight into the facility to minimize the use of the artificial lighting. Taking all this information, we worked closely with our construction manager to develop an overall project cost and really broke it down into high-level details, but I'm just showing you the overall summary. So based on our current estimate, we have our construction costs and the associated contingencies from your change order contingency to the GMP guaranteed maximum price contingency. And as, we're also carrying estimating design contingency because there's still some design work that's ongoing. That's about $9.9 million. Then we build on our soft costs, including builder's risk insurance, professional fees, furnishings, communications, construction support, as well as temporary facilities and overall project contingency, which our total project costs currently at $11,418,000. And as mentioned earlier, that's compared to the budget of $11,433,000. So really, the takeaway is that we've achieved what we indicated we would do is address all of those code safety and operational efficiencies within the budget that's been established. And one of the items that we did really look at closely was implementing cost control measures. So there are several bid alternates that are included, and these are items that we felt would be good to do if they can fit within the budget, but not a necessity to address those code safety and operational efficiencies. And those are listed on the screen in front of you. So should we receive competitive bids? We'll ensure that bid alternates will only be accepted if they remain within the budget that's been established for the project. And then in closing on my portion, the schedule, I've prepared a high-level outline schedule of what the project has basically moving forward. It starts with the minority outreach, which will be done by PDS, and Mr. Sober will talk about that in a moment. And that begins on May 2nd through June 29th. Concurrently, we'll be completing our design documents. We'll be ready by May 25th. Once those are complete, we'll move through the procurement process with PDS, May 29th through June 29th, having a guaranteed maximum price by early July, at which point we'll bring that to the committee for their review and approval by mid-July. And based on an approval received at that time, we'll be able to move forward with construction at the end of July with about a 12-month window for construction. At this point, I'll turn it over to Gordon to talk a little bit about the minority participation update.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you. Just a quick aside, PDS is a Bloomfield company. It's been here for 50 years. We're very proud to be doing this job. As a matter of fact, I'm here with Jeff Nylund, who's going to be our project manager throughout the job. We know that one of the crucial items was trying to make sure that we have a strong showing on the MBE side through the outreach and also through local participation in the project. As Jeff had shown before, we had a timeline of May 2nd through June as far as for the outreach. It actually started out sooner. Last week, we've put out about 3,500 emails to all the registered minority firms. We used the DAS listing to get them out to all the minority firms that are listed through their system, that are registered MBEs. We also, a lot of word of mouth, as you see up here, on last Tuesday, I was at the MCC, the Minority Construction Council, and actually spoke there at one of their meetings, just trying to develop a little bit of energy, let people know that we're, you know, where the project is. We are certainly happy that the previous project had received such a response to its bids. That's the Human Services Building. So we think that we're in pretty good shape as far as being able to get the responses in. We're pretty confident that we're going to, we know we'll meet the, we know we'll meet the requirements, but we're pretty confident that we'll probably be able to exceed that also, just based on the response that came from the previous project and the climate in the bidding client right now. And I think one of the things that we wanted to go through is actually talk a little bit about right now, because the certification process, the only thing that we can really go by is the state certification process. As a matter of fact, in the contract, you guys stated that, you know, all the MBEs must be state-certified through the DAS. So we are making sure that right now with this part of this outreach is that we're looking to develop teams if we have to. Some of the firms may not be able to meet a lot of the criteria, or they may not be able to meet the size of the packages. So what we're trying to do is actually bring them in, get a feel for who they are, what their specialties are, and then how we can go and create packages that will be able to accommodate as many of those firms as possible.
Excuse me, do you mind speaking into the mic just for?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you, but I don't think.
Oh, I'm sorry. So anyway, as I was saying, is that we're going to try and find creative ways to develop packages in order to make sure that we get the largest amount of participation as possible. And I think that answers mine, and it's already up to, thank you, so.
So you're gonna, just so that I have an understanding, you're going to, based on the minority contractors that show interest, you're going to break up the packages based on that instead of breaking up the packages prior to?
Right, well, we're gonna, there are basic packages that you can break up, sight lighting. Some of the electrical packages can be broken up between the low voltage and they create smaller packages so they're easier for the firms to meet the criteria. But the problem is, is that, you know, in this, we're talking about, I think it's worth a $2.4 million that we need to go ahead and give out in minority participation packages. So it's going to take a little creativity to be able to go and get those firms. So it may mean that we have sight lighting separate from, you know, separate from landscaping. We have site concrete. So we're trying to figure out what, you know, when they come in, we can, we have a general idea as to what those packages are, but we really like to see the response so that we can maybe tailor it a little bit better.
Or marry up if you have to.
If we have to, yes.
Is there going to be a bonding requirement?
That's the tricky part. We have to take a look at that. Typically, you would have bonding requirements. The problem is, is that if there's not, there's a lot of risk. There's a lot of risk put on our shoulders. And so it, and that, so we have to, we have to go through, and that we haven't decided on yet.
Because it's possible that you could do a shore guard if you wanted to. I know, I know it opens you up to a lot more. I get it. But I hope that you understand that that could be a barrier.
Mm-hmm, we do.
So that we can work with it.
Yeah, and that's why I was, that's why I'm hesitant about it.
Excellent. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Counselor May.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. This is the first time we've heard about this project, and it's been out there since probably about as long as the Human Services Facility. It was the first time we've heard anything about it. A couple of questions. I was looking at the picture about, which was shown to us very from the very beginning about the congestion in the vehicle storage building. Yet, I have to ask, is there sufficient, you're not expanding that building, but you're providing additional area for vehicle maintenance, will we still be having that same kind of chopper block parking arrangement in that building?
No, as part of the process in the project, we're looking to improve, there's an existing pre-engineered metal building on-site with limited access, so we're looking to improve the access to that building, which will therefore open up that for better storage, more efficient storage, and thus eliminating everything that's sardine and jam-packed in.
Oh, so there's another option? Okay. And your question is, you've identified the shortcomings of the present facility. What year are you designing this to considering that things are changing or things grow or demands for more space or new technologies? Are we just fixing it to today's standard? Or how do you? Are we just fixing it to today's standard, or how do you start a project like that?
So, we spent, this project has been ongoing for many years, so we spent a lot of time upfront looking at changes in technology, changes in operation, and to the best of our ability, we look to design this for the future. It's a 50-year building, and so with that, we are able to meet the current demands, the near-term demands. And then what we do is we get creative in how we design the interior for the future demands that we haven't quite identified, that no one can really put their hands on. And that's done with different construction types, so that walls can be easily moved, systems can be easily modified, and adjustments can be made. But, we are looking for this to be a long-term improvement based on the current operation and what the current market and industry is showing for the types of operations that we see in the future.
Okay, good. One final question. There was a desire early on to get some sort of solar energy package with, along with this building, on top of the roof of this building. It was discussed, obviously, it didn't go very far, but I hope that you can still work with, work in that direction because, you know, reducing the cost of the operations, electric, so forth, is not only important to the town, but also the environmental benefits of having a solar. I know that there are other town projects that are looking at it, including the Human Service Facility, no-cost power purchase agreement, something you might want to look into. Company will put up the panels and you just pay a lease, basically. Of course, you have to make sure it's to your liking, but it still promises to provide a discount for the electric cost, you know, immediately.
Right.
So, I'd like to hear more about that as we go forward, to make the building of the future.
Sure, and just to quickly comment on that, any of the new construction that we design, we typically will build in the additional dead load for any solar panels, so that when that becomes an economical solution, it can be easily retrofitted to the existing building, to the new components. The existing building's a little more difficult because that added load might require you to do structural upgrades, but as a minimum, we're factoring in some of those requirements for future solar within the new additions.
So, that will be part of your development package, strengthening the load factor?
On the newer facilities, but not on the existing.
Not on the existing.
The existing is only being upgraded to meet current snow loads at various, point loads at very specific areas of the building. Overall, the cost to upgrade the entire roof, all of the structural steel, would send us quite a bit above our budget that has been established.
So, oh, I'm sorry. So, that would assume that you wouldn't get full energy benefit, you haven't got all your roof under some sort of solar. It'd just be an add-on, a little bit of a boost?
Correct.
Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Thank you, Matt.
Councilor Mayor.
One of the main reasons for going ahead with this, at least as soon as possible, was the contamination from the oil tanks, gasoline tanks. Is that being taken care of already in the project? And it occurred to me while you were talking, talking about 50-year building, probably within 20 years, we will no longer be using gasoline. So, I'm wondering how you're looking to the future there?
Sure.
Would we put a charging unit in for battery-operated trucks? I don't know.
Sure. So, the removal of the existing tanks in construction of the new tanks would be done early in the process, so that's part of the package. That would deal with any, if there were any residual contamination that's identified, that would be addressed as part of that. And with regard to the alternative fuels, the change in the future, that's a very good point, and in fact, on our plan, we have an area designated near where the fueling operations are going to be that's set aside for any future alternative fuels. So, we have a footprint that's reserved, saved, nothing will get constructed there, so that as technology changes, we'll have the ability to incorporate it on-site.
And the tanks are above ground.
The new tanks, yeah.
I didn't even have to ask that.
Any other, Deputy Mayor?
I just want to go back to the minority participation. What is the goal that you guys are shooting for as far as the percentage-wise?
By a contract, it's 30%.
30%?
Right.
You're not looking to exceed that 30%?
Well, that's the point, is that we're trying to figure out ways, and that May 2nd will certainly have a big hand in directing us how we can. We are looking, of course, we're looking to exceed it. We just, we're actually just finished phase one of a project for the state, where it was the early demo package, we're looking at, we're actually to achieve 100% participation for the first phase of those projects. So, we're always looking for ways to exceed that.
So, my second question is, with the timeline, we're looking at, you know, starting the construction roughly around July, you're saying?
Correct.
So, with July, you said 12 months, how would that affect the winter conditions? How would that impact with the construction?
Well, we're phasing, and Jeff probably talked better to it, but the phasing of it is that we're looking to get the additions up in place, so we have the ability to get everybody in under a roof and then start the interior construction while it's in the inclement weather.
So, let me just put it this way, just kind of give me the breakdown of the project. What's the first phase and the timeline?
Okay. Well, the first phase would be the working of the foundations, the fueling island, and then the foundations for the additions. Then we'll move through at that point and then start the construction of the walls and roofing and whatnot for the addition, fit that out, and then once the fit-out is done on the two additions, then we'll go into the, I'm sorry, I usually talk loud enough, but then we'll start in on the renovation to the existing building.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilor McClery?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back to the minority contractor, and I think you've mentioned something about safeguard insurance.
Safeguard.
Safeguard insurance. What is the benefit and what is the con of that?
Well, the problem with safeguard is, most of the contracts for that insurance are larger projects. So, it's difficult to use that on a smaller project. One of the advantages is, it covers the project as a whole versus the individual contractors requiring, needing that, needing the bonding.
So, what is the fiscal impact for $11 million project if we were to get sure guard? Would it add to the cost, or would it decline, would the cost stay flat? Construction cost, that is. So, if you were to go out and get that for minority contractors, would it have a significant impact on your budget?
I tell you, to be honest, I don't know, but maybe, do you have an idea? I don't, I don't know.
You're talking sure guard?
Yeah, sure guard.
Sure guard, in this case.
Yeah.
So, sure guard in the essence is where subcontractors can't get bonds, or maybe they can get bonds, and the general contractor says, "I will take on that risk rather than do it." And it's not a simple question to answer because it's based on a lot of factors that go involved. But definitely, the more risk comes about is, is that if I have guys that cannot get bonds, the general contractor himself is taking on that risk. Now, I may have to pay premiums, they may vary in level, but in turn, it's like a deductible on a car, if you would imagine, is that sure guard has deductibles. So, you're buying it, so if there was, say, the first $100,000, the general contractor, the construction manager, is covering that first $100,000 until the policy kicks in. So, it's, if I can continue, it's a basis of judging your subcontractors and how you think that risk is. Now, you may have a lot of smaller subcontractors that are okay fiscally, but they haven't gone through the bonding process, they don't go through that paperwork, they've never applied for a bond before, so the insurance company is going to use them as a higher risk, they're going to pay a higher rate, et cetera, not meaning that they're a good financial company. So, in trying to achieve higher goals, which is what we all want to do, is you have to understand, one, where is our work? Okay, so, do we have a lot of electrical work? Do we have a lot of HVAC work? And then come to an analysis of the minorities and what kind of work that they perform. If we don't have a minority that can do a million-dollar electrical package just for the argument, well, then you have to try to break it apart because we have minorities that could do 50,000 or 100,000. So, maybe you break it apart and they could get the fire alarm work, we break it apart, or we break the site lighting into the thing. So, it becomes a more manageable package, and that's how you try to incorporate more people into the mix. So, it's a lot of pieces to the parts. It's not a simple answer, but, you know, in overall, when you're trying to do sure guard or sub-guard, whatever it call it is, the GC is taking on that higher amount of risk.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you want to go, are you guys familiar with the Hartford?
Yes, Hartford program.
Hartford program.
Yes.
So, they developed in one of those scenarios what they called a minority contingency, where they said, "We understand the potential problems of a minority contractor, smaller, may not bid it correctly, da-da-da-da-da, don't want them to get hurt." So, there was a pot of money set aside where the construction manager could go and say, "My minority is having a problem, they bid it incorrectly," whatever it may be, "and here's a separate pool of money to come and say, 'Okay, we can take it out of that to help assist the minority contractor.'" Now, that isn't specifically set up this way, not saying that it can't be set up this way, but is it, how do you do that? How do we adjust the money for that?
Right. Excuse me, I think I just wanted to have on record that there's other alternatives.
Yes.
Realizing that some minority contractors might want to play, but they can't for certain reasons. But I'm glad to hear that it's something that you will look into. I'm glad to also hear that you'll break down the packages if you need to, or marry up if you need to. So, I think one of the concerns that I had for the minority is to make sure that we give them as much of an opportunity as possible to participate.
And that would be the goal, but one thing that we don't want to let happen is, is that you don't want to have a minority contractor get into a position where they're going to fail.
Correct.
That that's not good for them, it's not good for us, it's not good for the town.
Correct.
Okay? And then when, in looking at these packages and say, "Who's showing interest? What are their capabilities? And do we have the ability to break the work apart in order to try to make that feasible for them?"
Correct.
So, we may have a guy that, he does a particular task, right? But there's only one minority that can do that. Then we have a problem of breaking that package out because state bidding law says you have to have three people bid. It doesn't work.
Right.
Right? So, we're trying to, it's a gauge of a lot of things. You got to understand, you know, who is interested in the job, what services they perform, what are their financial capabilities, and how do we take all of that together and say, "How can we do it in a fashion where we can achieve good quality work, the subcontractor can be successful, and we can keep on budget?" So, it's a lot of things happening.
I know, it's a lot.
One of the things that Hartford had done was, they basically made the decision to, for lack of a better term, self-insure.
Yeah.
For those. So, they created, they created those, that pool of money.
Yeah.
As a sureguard or a safeguard or sub-guard.
Yeah, yeah.
So, my next question is still on the lines of the minority contractor. What I've been hearing is a lot of, you know, general contractors understand that they have to hit this percent goal, and they've been doing a lot of pass-throughs through, because there's a loophole in the state regulation with procurement. So, you'll go to like a lumberyard that's owned, maybe owned by a minority, and you'll purchase a million dollars in lumber, or in steel, or in wires, and you'll hit that, you'll hit that $2.4 million goal that you have out there for minority contract because it's 30% of the actual cash value and not actually 30% of the people working. Another thing is that true minorities, I hear a lot of pass-throughs. There are some companies that may have, you know, they get their wives to, you know, own the company, and because the state law includes women in the WBE, MBE disadvantage businesses, it counts towards the 30%. So, could you, I know it's kind of, you know, premature to ask you for a definite answer, would you try your best to get actual true minority firms, and particularly Bloomfield firms, and work with them to make sure that they're working on this project? Because I look at these guys as guys who are just trying to pay their bills, they're not trying to buy a yacht, they're not trying to go on six vacations or fly over country or across the country. What they're just simply trying to do is just take care of their family and take care of their workers' family. And I would like to see the money that we're spending, this taxpayer dollars, you know, funded through back into our community, because they're going to be the ones to go to the local Home Depot, they're going to be the ones to go to the Stop &amp; Shop, they're going to be the ones to pay their property taxes. So, I would like to see true minority Bloomfield residents who own construction companies in the town of Bloomfield, or may have their company registered somewhere else but live in Bloomfield, have opportunity on this project. And I just, you know, I was, I saw the email that you guys sent out for minority, you know, for minority participation. I want, I wish we would do a little bit more boots on the ground and not just send emails out and have these traditional, you know, these workshops. And when you do have these workshops, kind of coach them through like how to get the bonding, you know, how to do the certified payroll, get their paperwork thing, because most of the, the problem with minority contractors are the back end of their businesses. And so, when they do get to these projects, they can never ever elevate because you keep breaking out small packages for them. So, they can't take on the 1 million, or 2 million, or 3 million, because they don't have the capacity to do, you know, the bonding, because we always set them up to do these small packages. And so, they can't bid on a $5 million project or a $10 million project. So, I just hope, I just hope that we, you know, we help them, you know, continue to build their business.
Well, that's part of the reason why, as we said before, that we're going to try and get firms to sort of partner up.
To Maria.
And now give them an opportunity to go ahead and work on the bigger packages. We also have Kurt Harrison from Nutmeg Planers with us, and he helps the minority firms with the paperwork, keeping everything, making sure that all the paperwork is right, and so they don't miss a requisition, they don't miss their paperwork filings that would hold up a check to them.
But...
So, we do, we do do that. I think the other piece that we have to, that we have to be careful of, though, is that unlike Hartford, where they have a local...
Requirement, participation?
Well, a local benefit for the firms that are local Hartford firms, Bloomfield does not have that. And so, we're bound by procurement laws that we go out and we can't, we can't send it to just strictly minority firms. We have to allow the WBEs and the disabled firms to go ahead and participate as equally as the minority firms. So, I think what we are trying to do, and again, by getting it out to the, that's why I spoke at the MCC, that's why, you know, Kurt has gone out to all the different minority organizations to make sure that it's on their newsletter, it's in, it's talked about. So, we are trying to get as far a reach as possible.
So, Council McClery, can you hold a minute, please? Let Councilor Merrick answer the question.
Oh, I wasn't finished with my chain of questions.
You've asked a couple. Can we just let Councilor Merrick go and then you can resume?
This is right, and I won't take a lot of time. I just think that you're asking a lot for the contractors to do this, it's going to be some cost. I'm wondering if the town can help out somehow. I think it may be that we need to find some way of supportive, whether it's rules, or the money, or whatever. This is going to happen, it shouldn't, it sounds to me like too much to ask of it. You seem to be wanting to do this, but if we can help you somehow, maybe do what Hartford's doing, or something along that line, it might get further than just, we don't want to just be on you for this.
Well, so, we have an obligation, is that of part of what the state mandates is, and of having minority participation, and the goal is 30% centered in our contract. And we don't have the ability to determine who's a minority contractor and who's not a minority contractor. That's done by the state of Connecticut. They have to file, there's a process. I can't control any of that. So, I understand where Councilman here says, "Well, you know, women firms, that really the case." That may be true, that may not be true, but I can't, I can't do anything about it.
At the MCC, just at the last big, Cheryl Sharp was there from CHRO, and I asked her this very question explicitly, I said, "Is there a way..." her this very question explicitly, I said, "Is there a way that we can go and put that, put that out?" Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a way that we can direct it and separate out the minority from the women-owned and the disabled? And she said, "Under current law, you cannot." Now, that requires a town ordinance of some, of some sort to go ahead and to initiate that. And I don't know, to be honest, I don't know if there's enough time to be able to develop that, that can get through legal and all, in time for bidding at this point.
Yeah.
So if you want to put a pool of money together, no.
So I think the other part is, and the Councilman brings up about, you know, people that are in Bloomfield, okay? So when we get lists from the state, it lists where the residing company is. So the person owns the company, he may live in Bloomfield, but the address of his company is Hartford, or Windsor, or whatever it's going to be. So we're not provided information about where the person that owns that company lives.
Right.
So if the council.
And as is the case with, with many of the Bloomfield companies, they are, I mean, the residents, their companies are registered in Hartford for that advantage of being able to participate on the Hartford program.
So I would say if there was an ability for the town to help, then I think the ability for town to help would be, is to reach out in some form or fashion and say, "Hey, if you own a company and your physical address is actually in Hartford, or Windsor, or whatever it may be, but you live here," then these companies could, how does the town help them? Reach out and say, "Let us know that." Right? So then we know who that company is. I mean, we can't create a package that says, "Only these people can bid on it," but at least we know who those players are.
I have the list of the, the companies that are registered in Bloomfield, and I believe there's about twenty, and some, some work in the management, some do work in the construction. So there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of both, and be able to blend them in.
So bear in mind, it works the other way, too. The company that's here in Bloomfield, the people that own it may live someplace else.
Right.
So there's, you know, there's six and one-half dozen of the other.
Right. Councilor McLeary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A way, just, I don't know if your company has an intern, or if this project has an intern. A way to find that out is if you go to the Secretary of State's business wing of the Secretary of State's office, you can search the company and with their business filing, and their formation, their business formation, you can find out where the persons, the owner's physical address is. So I know it may be a lot of time and energy dedicated to that, but if you have an intern, that'd be a perfect opportunity for your intern to go to the Secretary of State's.
Well, I'm sure most of the people will be coming to the outreach. I would assume that they're going to be, they'll show up on May 2nd.
Okay.
I would assume that would be the case. And, you know, I've spoken to Garfield Gunter, I've spoken to a couple other firms directly, and they will certainly be, they will certainly be here.
Okay.
What we can also do is put it on the town website, so we can get that out, that information out as well. We do also have a list of contractors that we can try to reach out to as well, to try to help. But speaking to Garfield is a great thing. He does reside here in Bloomfield, and he's an amazing contractor. Are there any other questions? Councilor Marshall Neely?
Thank you so much. Your presentation was really nice, it's very informative. I, I was going to ask questions with regard to the thirty percent minority, but they were already addressed. With regard to the Phase One, Phase Two, do you have a timeline for when you're going to start Phase Two? And also, do you have a compliance manager that will be out there making sure that costs don't go up? We want to stay on, on target with what we're, what we're doing. Do you have that?
The cost manager is Jeff, so.
O P M. Yes.
Oh, an O P M.
Going out to bid for that.
Okay.
Owners Project Manager.
Yeah, okay.
Did I lose you?
Yeah. But the, I, I think from the, the mechanisms, the way that the construction management delivery method is set up, is that we're working, I mean, that's really what we've done, as Jeff has explained before, that's how we ended up with those, or add alternates in the pricing, because we've been working to try and keep those numbers down. So we will certainly be there working the whole time, to ensure that those costs don't go over. And we do have a compliance person, as I mentioned, Nutmeg Planners, to ensure that the minority participation is adhered to.
Okay, that's all I need.
Any other questions? Councilor Mayor.
While Director of Public Works is here, I wanted to ask him if he's satisfied and happy with the proposal that he's received. You're going to have to live in it.
Good question. I am satisfied in, to sort of get back to a question that you had asked earlier, have we designed for the future? Yes, I think we've designed for the present, I think we've had, we have an eye, this design has an eye toward the future, with a bigger eye on the bottom line. So we're cognizant of what our responsibilities are, what the budgetary restrictions are, what all the other terms are, and I think, I think Jeff and Gordon have done a good job, and the building committee's done a good job, sort of steering it into the, into the right direction. So we're going to hit all of the key objectives and stay within budget with planning toward the future. You know, one of the things Jeff didn't show on some of his slides, and some of you may have seen it earlier, is we're talking about a facility that was designed nearly sixty years ago. So that cramped space you saw on that slide was a result of the fact that the building was designed for equipment that is now two and three times the size of what it was sixty years ago. So we're dealing with some of that. Ideally, we would probably eliminate all that space and build it new to the appropriate size, but that's not cost-effective. So we've decided to prioritize what we need to have done, make use of the space we have, renovate it as best we can, and be prepared going forward. So I think we've got as good a plan as we can have, and we've certainly got a really good layout to help get us there.
Debbie, Mayor?
Thanks, John. I just want to go back to the timeline of when we're going to start the project. You don't foresee, or you have a plan in place just to make sure that it doesn't impede on service?
Yeah, so that was a good question. I was actually, I wanted to hear what Jeff and Gordon's answer was, because they're not responsible for the operational aspects of the department, and I was kind of curious how Jeff's approach to snow removal is going to be. But we're going to, we're going to work as best we can with what we have. I think, you know, Gordon indicated that they're going to lay the footing for the additions, they're going to build some of the new space, move out into it, and then do the interior work in the winter months. But between the impact on winter operations and the impact on the work, we're going to try to do some of the work, as much of the work as we can, with our own forces, to make sure that we can help try to control the costs. So things that we can do, we will do, you know, almost like a do-it-yourself type effort. But we need to make sure that we plan that, that we coordinate that in conjunction with all the other things we need to do, and then we prepare for our, for our winter operations. We'll, we'll make it work. You know, it's really going to be really one long winter that we're going to have to get through. And I think the plan that I've seen so far, that Gordon and Jeff have put together, is going to have enough of the work done that it's going to give us a decent footing going into December, January of the upcoming year.
Perfect, thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you very much for your time this evening, appreciate it. Thanks for your support as well.
Thank you. We're going to move into citizen statements and petitions. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're all set.
Okay. Nancy, is there anything to add?
No. The one thing I would add.
I understood your question on the compliance having to do with someone monitoring the project. As they are in Three Thirty Park, they will be having an independent owners' project representative as well, which I anticipate will follow the same guidelines that we've established for the other project. They just haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you for answering my question.
Oh, yes, committee chair, correct?
I would like to point out that this will be a construction project, and I have, sometime this year, I don't want to give away the date, but sometime this year I'll celebrate my sixtieth anniversary in construction. I have yet to work on a project that didn't have extras or change orders.
Yeah.
There will be change orders, I'm sure. It's responsibility of the building committee to approve those change orders. And as we did, well, the bulk of our committee worked on the Carmen Avery School, and we handled our change orders there, we came in under budget, and I think we can still do the same thing here. And again, a lot of this is dependent upon the construction economy is when we go to bid. Hopefully, we'll come in nice and low, and we can handle everything. I want to thank you all for listening to us, and we'll be glad to come back at any point. I shouldn't say that so widely, but we'll be glad to come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now, citizen statements and petitions? None? Nancy?
Yes. The boob is getting empty.
You're right, Harry.
Yes. I'm going to go to sleep, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia Reed?
Yeah.
Name and address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have some concern about educational incentive programs.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. Claudine Reed, Eight Scott Drive in Bloomfield. Now I can go? Okay. I have concerns with the, with educational incentive programs in Bloomfield. For instance, I have a friend's son who goes to First Achievement in Hartford, and if the child maintains a certain GPA and good behavior throughout the year, they get to go on trips, and these are also educational trips. It's partly funded by the family, it's partly funded by the family, but is very low. The school pays for most of it, or I don't know how, who pays for most of it, but they get to go to trip to Washington, they get to go to Pennsylvania, they spend a week at UConn, they've spent a week in New Jersey. They didn't spend a week at Six Flags in New Jersey, these were educational trips, but they got to go. So, and Hartford also has a stepping program for kids who are high achievers. I don't see any of these programs in Bloomfield schools. I've been asking for the past two years to have the stepping stone program come to Bloomfield, and every time I call the Board of Ed and ask the Board of Ed about this program, they stated that, "Oh, the budget is already in, and we don't have the money." My son do very well in school, I don't want to be a parent that brag, but he does do very well in school academically. The only incentive that they have in Bloomfield are sports. Because my son likes sports does not make him an athlete. Right now, he's playing baseball because there's nothing else in the school. I mean, all they have is, he got good grades in math and they put him in Khan Academy. You know what Khan Academy is?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
He goes and he takes the thing on, because he gets high grades in math. There's no incentive, there's no academic incentive for someone like my child, or other kids in the school. There is in Hartford. How is it that you're building, approving an eleven million dollar project, but you can't donate some money to the public school system? So the kids feel that there is some reward for them being good. And let me tell you something again, I was a substitute teacher for two years, and I've substituted most of the school in central Connecticut, that's East Hartford, New Britain, any schools in the surrounding Hartford area. And I'm telling you, Bloomfield Public Schools is one of the best behaved kids in the school system. New Britain, they're sweet kids, but they're so far behind. Manchester, they dump so much money in their school system. East Hartford, Jesus Christ, it's horrible. But when you go into a Bloomfield school system and you sit in the classroom, the kid sits there and they look at you waiting for instructions. You don't get that from other schools, you don't. You really don't get that. You get kids all over the place, in New Britain's school system, in East Hartford's school system. I was in East Hartford School, and I won't even say the name of the school, but it was a fourth grade class, and at the end of the day, the principal came to me and says, "Miss Reed, thank you." I said, "Thank you for what? I didn't do anything." He said, "Thank you for keeping the kids in the classroom." That's all he wanted. Not the kids to sit down and learn, not the kids to do their work, but just to not have them running around the classroom. That's, I don't know what to say about something like that, I really don't. But when you go to Bloomfield School, the kids sit down as a sub, and they look at you waiting for instructions, and there's no incentive for them. Where do they go if they get high achievement? Where do they go if they have high academics? Where do they go if they have good behaviors? First Achievement, they get to go all over the place. For spring break, First Achievement is open to the kids that attend the school. First, they have like three hours of academic learning, then in the afternoon, they have fun activities. What did the kids have in school for Bloomfield? My son does not transition from when he leaves school over the summer very well. I figured that out, that I have to get him into some program. When he first started Bloomfield Schools, they used to have summer, summer, summer school. In the morning, you have summer school, in the afternoon, you have summer camp, all one day. And that was something, was free to everyone. Now they're saying, "Only if the child qualifies for it." Well, my son needs that bridge, otherwise he does very poorly, and it takes him a time to transition from summer to school. I've gone to the principal and asked the principal to beg her to put him in a summer school, and she's like, "No." So I have to pay out of pocket so my son will have that transition, because he doesn't transition very well. It takes him a while. Now, over the summer, I paid for him to go to summer camp, and he transitioned very well, and he does very well in school, but there's nothing for him. All they put him in was Khan Academy, online math program, and he's a high achiever in math. The math teacher, the math director of the math program at Bloomfield School told me that my son is one of the best math student in the school, but there's nothing for him. They give you these pins, these stars, and if you're not at the award ceremony to figure out where these stars come from, you don't know what they're getting the stars from. They didn't even have a piece of paper to say, "Hey, your child scored in the ninety to a hundred percentile program." I mean, for math, just read it. You don't know what, they just, one time he came home with three of them hanging off his sweatpants string. And you don't know what they're for if you didn't go. So we need some kind of academic incentive program. You can't be funding a million dollar project to park old cars and how, and they can come here and get tutor, whatever they need to do. This place is open to the public. They can set up meetings here, but you can't fund our kids. I don't think that's fair, and we need a stepping stone program here, we need something. Last year, they had Journey. This year, there's nothing.
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Mayor, just want to ask a question. Do you have a description of this program that you're talking about, the stepping stone program? That, you understand that the council really doesn't have any ability to interact or change things at the Board of Education, but if we had some information, more of what you're talking about, we could pass that on and we can take it up in our next budget.
Okay, so.
Period, so that maybe we can encourage some of this.
The stepping stone program is a program that if a child.
Well, if you could get something to us in writing, maybe another time, or if you have, or a reference, whatever.
A website?
Web something.
On Hartford Public Schools, do you have a, do your friend have like a brochure that they may have sent home about it? If you can do that, maybe to Councilor Nancy's point, we can pass it over to the Board of Ed.
Okay, so...
Period, so that maybe we can encourage some of this.
The Steppenstone Program is a program that if a child...
Well, if you could get something to us in writing, maybe another time. Or what, if you have, or a reference, whatever...
A website?
Web something.
Hartford Public Schools. Do you have a, do your friend have like a brochure that they may have sent home about it? If you can do that, maybe to Councilman Nancy's point, we can pass it over to the Board of Ed.
Well, that's one program, but what about other fundings for programs for kids who are high achievers, like going on trips to Washington? Or if they maintain a certain GPA and maintain their behavior, they can go towards something that's... She has her hand raised.
What grade did you say your son was in?
Currently in the sixth grade.
He's in the sixth grade. Okay. I believe in positive reinforcement. I believe in encouraging kids and giving them something to ascertain, to aspire to. I believe in that. And if you can't find anything about the Steppenstone Program, I will. But there's other programs as well. I did ask the Board of Ed whether or not they knew of programs that they could incorporate into the curriculum for our students. And I didn't get any answer that I wanted. That doesn't stop me. So you're, you're standing here, the, the town council is actually not responsible for the Board of Ed. But that doesn't mean we don't have a concern about what goes on in our town. And so as, as a citizen, I would say to you, I would look up that program and other programs, because I have some other avenues where I can do that. And I'm not doing it to, to take the responsibility, the onus on myself. I'm just doing it so that I could provide something for the council, so that we can maybe say, hey, this is available, this is available, this is available. One of the things that, that I would recommend is that the councilors, you know, utilize the councilors as much as you can.
The ones that are in the school?
Ask them, you, you ask them to, to come up with other programs for students. And I, you know, and I believe that, I know for a fact that just because you like sports doesn't make you an athlete. I know that. And I can only speak for myself when I say, Jennifer, that I look into some programs just to help you out, not to, not to, you know, step on the toes of anyone at the Board of Ed. But I understand your passion.
Well, I went to the councilors at school and the only thing they have to tell me is that if a child is failing, like they're getting tens and twenties in a classroom, then there is programs to help them, but kids like my son, there's nothing for them. And I did go to Board of Ed and Board of Ed says, "You need to attend your counseling meeting." Because I'm a layman in this environment, this is where I ended up. Now, if you're directing me to somewhere else, I have no problem going.
Yeah, could I just add? What I would suggest is to reach out to Dr. Thompson. I know right now, he's facilitating some meetings with parents and discussing certain things within the school program. So I would suggest that you reach out to him. But yes, you could always come out to the council meeting, but we have to start there. Because they're the ones that will be able to implement some of these things that you're talking about. But I think it's a prime time right now to kind of connect with Dr. Thompson, because they're working with parents right now to add a lot of the programs that you're talking about.
I don't know who Dr. Thompson is.
Ayesha, the superintendent for the school. You have my number. I'll connect with you. We can connect and I can get you his information and, and provide it to you.
Okay.
Well, just to piggyback on that, the Hartford Youth Scholars Program?
That's it, but it's not in Bloomfield. It's only for Hartford residents.
Here it is, we can, we'll be able to funnel that through. That, because that's what, that's what you're looking for, right? So there's a model right there for them to look at.
Yes, it's a model, yes, yes. It's, but that's not the only program. That's the only name that come off the top of my head is others. Hartford has a lot of incentive for kids who do well.
Right.
And because it's a town where there's a lot of low income, but not everyone who lives in Bloomfield are rich. I am not rich. And I cannot afford to, with my son off to Europe, as some students who go to Renbrook or Loomis Chaffey, I can't afford any of that stuff. So I have to depend on whatever program the community has to offer. And I need something from the schools. I pay taxes here, I live here. My son is not a problem. He does very well in school. I mean, he's not a perfect kid, but he's not hurting in the school system.
I, I think it's something that we will definitely try to help as far as giving a voice to. The ultimate decision will be theirs. But there's a lot of other schools that have programs that we can model, right? There's for, for kids who want to go study abroad, for kids who want to go do summer vacation and do community service someplace else. There's a lot of things that can be done that probably just have to open their eyes.
There's even this award, I forgot the name of it. It's a child from my school, from, from my church. He goes to school in Hartford at Noah Webster. He's actually getting an academic award being presented from Central Connecticut State University. What is the kids here getting?
So we are working on some programs that's going to connect with the schools. We've been looking into some of those programs and bringing some people at the table with the school board. So some things are happening behind the scenes. It may not be happening as quick as you want it to happen.
I haven't seen them.
I, that's what, well, we just started. So use all the resources that you have available to you to make sure that your child gets what they, get what they need. And we will try to add a voice to that as well.
I, I just wanted to, to make sure you've already spoken with the Board of Ed?
I've, I've brought up the issue to Board of Ed several times. I haven't brought up the issue with the Board of Ed because they just get a star. And a star doesn't indicate anything. The only way you know what the star means is if you attend the ceremony. Once every three months, they have an academic ceremony. If you don't attend the ceremony, you don't know why the child is getting a star. It's just a star. You don't know what the star is for. Because I said one day, I didn't attend the academic ceremony and he came home with three of them and a stick on his loop pants. There's no certificate, there's nothing to say. You know, all they get is a ceremony, that's it. And your name get called, there's nothing else.
And, and what was your feedback? What did they, what was the response when you asked for programs?
We don't have the money.
Okay, okay.
I have here for you the, the Chair of the School Board, Don Harris. And also, there's a parent who's active, her name is Angelique Foster. So if you could reach out to both, I think we can start facilitating that conversation.
I will, because I'm... My son was accepted to Trinity Hartford Magnet School. And I didn't send them, because I really want to believe in Bloomfield School. But the whole year, I have not seen anything to have my son, you know, any reward for his hard work in school. I didn't see anything. There's no programs. They don't have Journey. Last year, they had Journey. They don't have it here because of budget cuts. There's nothing more than sports. And I hate to say that my son loves sports, but he's not an athlete. And that's all they have. And I put him in there because there's nothing else. So I'm really disappointed in the school system, because there's no incentive. The kids that, that, um, at First Achievement, you don't have to be a straight A student to take part. You just have to make, maintain C and above and good behavior. And you get to take part in other, other activities. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, Town Manager, Assistant to the Town Manager, now Town Clerk, also a fellow Bloomfield citizens. Good evening to you. I just want to present a simple petition from some people that live in the town of Bloomfield. It was presented to me from Mr. and Mrs. Arthur Hines at 25 Florence Road. Oh, incidentally, I live at 6 Essex Lane in Bloomfield. It was a petition to simply do this, to demand that the town of Bloomfield allocate the funds to fix our drainage problem, or put up retainer walls as the property continues to collect water and corrosion on our decks, driveways and sidewalks. There are four properties that reside on Florence Road in Bloomfield, Connecticut, that collect water from a hill behind our homes that trickle down to our property. The hill behind our homes is also our property. The constant leakage of water has caused water damage to our decks and constant cracks in our driveways and sidewalks. For the past 10 years, we have noticed water constantly draining into the foundation of our homes and causing it to sink. If left untreated, our home's property value will decrease. We have all spent thousands of dollars to repair cracks and repairs due to the water damage on our properties that have created unsafe conditions. We are asking for help to resolve this problem. We have continued to reach out to the town officials for help in the past and were denied. This problem no longer needs to be ignored. And along with the Hines names are 25, I mean, I'm sorry, nine other personnels. I just wanted to present that to you all as the council members. And my duty is complete.
Can, can you give that to India, so that it can get to the record? Yeah, so that she, it can get into the record. Thank you very much. Anybody else? India? That's it, okay. So at this time, we're going to have report from council subcommittees. And Admin Education?
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report from Admin Education. Our next meeting is May 2nd.
Counselor Goff is not here. Public Safety Counselor McClary?
Madam Mayor, I have no report from the Public Safety Committee. Our next meeting is next month, the second Monday, 6:30, Conference Room 5.
Committees on Committee?
Madam Mayor, the Committee on Committees met on April 16th and has forwarded a number of recommendations to this body for consideration at tonight's meeting, for appointments to boards and commissions coming up later.
Thank you. Land Use and Economic Development?
Madam Mayor, the Land Use and Economic Development Committee did not meet. We may be having a special meeting in the next couple of weeks as some things are beginning to happen. And we'd be glad to report back then.
Goff, Counselor Merritt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We met tonight and it was a good meeting. We had a lot of discussions on a lot of issues. We have a lot of new members and they were interested and had live questions. So it was a very useful, I think, informative meeting for everybody. But the, the main thing that came up was our interest in getting going on the management contract, the search for the management group. We've never had one since, not that we're unhappy with our present one. It's basically, we just think it's a regular, something we should do as a matter of form, go out and do a contract search. Other than that, the golf course is off to a rather cold start, because this is one of the coldest, wettest Aprils in recent history. And so it's, we're hoping for better weather. And it's, that's what it's all about, good weather. So it should be a good year.
Thank you. I think the last time that went out was, what, 15 years ago?
Something like that.
Something like that, okay. So we're going to move on to New Business, 1718-53. Consider and take action regarding Sustainable Connecticut.
Madam Mayor, if I may, this is a recommendation from the Conservation, Energy and Environment Committee that the town participate in the Sustainable Connecticut Program. I'm recommending that it be referred to the Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee for review, discussion and recommendation back to the council. Submove, second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Ayes have it. 1718-54. Consider and take action regarding adoption of shared solar resolution.
Yes, this is, if I may, Madam Mayor and council members, this is another recommendation from the Conservation, Energy and Environment Committee. And I would again recommend that this item be referred to the Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee for review, discussion and recommendation back to the council. Submove, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. 1718-55. Consider and take action regarding the approval for the application, of the application for the Quality School Readiness Grant Program. Priority School Readiness Municipalities. Is there a presentation on that?
Basically, this is the town, and by way of background, Mayor and council members, the town has historically supported these programs. I think Gail Nolan is here from the Alliance for Bloomfield's Children, ABC. If there are any specific questions, Gail, perhaps you can come to the podium and, and answer them.
Are there any questions? Can I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Counselor McClary?
Is there any cost to the town of Bloomfield with this? Is there any, is there any matching funds that are required by the town for this grant? Thank you.
School readiness is a grant from the State Office of Early Childhood for preschool spaces. So it allows the communities to set up a, well, the state sets up the sliding scale fee so that the parents of three and four-year-olds are able to go to preschool and they are helped depending on their income.
Any other questions? Any other discussions?
Yeah, I'd like to say. I think this is one of the most important things we do, and I feel very strongly about this. As you may have heard, we had some go-arounds with Bloomfield Early Learning Center a few years ago. And we're now having problems with the preschools being taxed and threatens to put some of them out of existence. And I think it's a very sad thing. Preschool is very, very important. And if you want to ever close the gap, it's one of the keys to doing it. If we don't provide preschools as a community, we're wasting our money to some degree. This is a half-truth, of course. And spending $20,000 per kid per year in later schooling. I mean, if they're not ready to start school, some of them never catch up. And it's that important. And I think we've ignored as a town, back in the, maybe 20, 25 years ago, we, we tried to have universal preschool in Bloomfield. We had the BEEP program for a few years. And we just couldn't afford to keep it going. And that was rather unfortunate. And we've gone ahead now with the, we're in school on, we have a magnet school for preschool. But it can only accommodate a few hundred out of 600 or 800 of our kids. And it's just a travesty that we haven't been able to do more. And in the meantime, the gap is picked up by, by Bloomfield Early Learning Center, the Congregational Church, and First Cathedral now is contributing. And other churches are providing space. And thank goodness they are, because without them, these kids wouldn't be getting anything. So it's, it's, it's very important to education in town. If, if you don't get the kids ready for first grade, it's, it's just... By the time they're six, I think, it used to be an ad that by the time they're six, you know whether you're going to college or going, going to prison sometimes. And that's an exaggeration, certainly. We said tonight that maybe the first 12 years are important. Well, the first six are that important. So if we really want to do something about education, we have got to address this preschool issue and give the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Nolan, thank you for, for your work, first of all. But I'm going to ask you a question. How many positions do you think will result from this grant?
This is a continuation grant from last year. So we're just continuing over the same number of slots that we had last year, that was 76. Each of the programs do have wait lists. So we did add on to the... Each of the programs do have wait lists, so we did add on to the application an additional, probably 10 to 12 slots if they become available in the state. We're not sure right now, you know, with the state budget, looking forward to that, if they're going to be able to add any additional spaces or increase the rate that they are able to do that, but we're always looking for them for more of that.
Okay, so I understand that it's a maintenance effort at this point, and that there might be a chance for some additional positions?
Yes. Usually, the state will look at communities for those that have filled all their spaces and those that still have openings, and try to transfer them from communities that have those open spaces where children are not attending to communities where they have wait lists, all their slots are full. So all our slots are full in Bloomfield, and we have some wait lists at some of the programs that could use some more additional funding.
Any further discussions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. 1718-56, Consider and Take Action Regarding Appointment to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission Alternate Position.
Madam Mayor, the Committee on Committees met on April 16th and voted to recommend to this body the appointment of Lisa Valera Simone, Voice and Drive, to be an alternate TPZ Town Planning and Zoning Committee, replacing a former alternate, and we move for adoption of this position.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Ayes have it. 1718-57, Consider and Take Action Regarding Appointment to the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. There are a number of people who have been determined to want to repeat their maintenance on the Inland Wetlands Committee, and the Committee on Committees voted to recommend approval of Howard Hunter, Alan Butkowsky, Joy Chance, and Nicholas Pankey. In addition of a new person on the board would be a recommendation for Kevin Hussein.
Second.
That's the motion.
Second.
Any discussions?
There are two other positions that need to be filled, and they will be filled hopefully within the next month.
Excellent. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 1718-58, Consider and Take Action Regarding Appointment to the Recreation Committee?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a bit awkward, but the Committee on Committees recommended Ms. Beverly Merritt to this position, and she has had to decline because of meeting schedules, problems with another committee that she apparently is sitting on, so this recommendation will have to be withdrawn.
1718-59, Consider and Take Action Regarding Appointment to the Bloomfield Youth Services Juvenile Review Board?
Madam Mayor, this is a rather large board that is made up of some people who don't reside in the town but have professional abilities that are important to impact upon the conditions and the needs of some of our youth. The committee met and voted to recommend to you the names of Roger Bunker, Patterson Crocker, Nicole Vanata Heath, Tony Harrison, Mark Mitchell, Dawn Cooper Roger, India Rogers, Officer Keenan Vudalik, Officer Robert Wilkins, Amy Paluska, Karen Goldman, and Mitchell Waterman to fill out the Bloomfield Youth Services Juvenile Review Board.
A second.
Any discussions?
Yes. On two prior occasions, I understand that there needs to be an appointment from the council liaison to this committee, and I've requested to be appointed to this committee, and I'm doing so publicly. I would like to be the council liaison to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? This review board passes. Oh, okay. Reports from the town manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council, a couple of things. I'd like to remind everybody that the annual budget, annual town and budget meeting is scheduled for May 7th at 7:00 PM. That's at Bloomfield High School, the auditorium. I had an opportunity to meet with Pam Tui, who is the staff person to the state's crumbling foundation committee. As many of you may know, this is a problem in more in eastern Connecticut. However, we do have one crumbling foundation here in Bloomfield, and our building department will be working on that particular issue with the state as the process pursues ahead. On April 12th, I had the opportunity, along with Deputy Mayor Curtin and Councilman Mann, to attend the senior volunteer reception at the Human Services Facility at 330 Park Avenue. We had a great time serving seniors, had a rendition from Councilor Mann of a Big Bopper rendition from both of our age cohorts in the past. I'd like to also announce that former Councilman Leon Rivers and Joel Neworth were also in attendance at the volunteer luncheon. And also, the Bloomfield Center Business Alliance did meet on April 16th, had a successful meeting, and I think we'll be hearing more from them in the future. That completes my report.
Excellent. So a couple of things. I had a wonderful opportunity to be at the Eric D. Coleman Center, the CRT students, to read with them for Abuse Prevention Day. It was absolutely amazing. I had the opportunity to read to three classes, and it was wonderful. That was a wonderful event. I'd also like to thank Councilor Mann and his wife, and everyone who put time into Earth Day celebrations on Saturday here at 330 Park. It was buzzing with people cleaning up, and Councilor Mann and his wife was down on Granby Street making Bloomfield beautiful. So I'd like to thank them and everyone else who participated in that event. I would echo the sentiments of the town manager to please, everyone, come out on May 7th. The council has taken time to go through the budget, and we believe that we are being fiscally responsible, but we do want our residents to come out and hear, to come out and share your opinion before the budget is totally passed. So please, on Monday, May 7th at 7:00 PM, we will be at the Bloomfield High Auditorium. Please, please, please come out and let your voices be heard. I also would like to talk about Celebrate Bloomfield. That's coming up. It's going to be...
The weekend of?
June 2nd.
Starting May 31st?
We're going to start on May 31st, and we're going to go all the way to June 3rd. We have a wonderful lineup of activities. On Friday night, we're going to have the Bloomfield Choir. There's going to be movies on the town green. On Saturday, we're going to have entertainment. We're going to have food trucks. Now, if I start talking about the food trucks, we're going to be here for a good long time, but they're good food, right? We're also going to have a craft fair, so we want you to come out. There are going to be restaurants in town that will have a $20.18 special for the week. We're asking you to please come out and enjoy all that Bloomfield has to offer. There will be a fundraising ball on the evening of June 2nd. You're going to hear more about that. All the proceeds will go to services right here in town. We need you all to come out and bloom with us during Celebrate Bloomfield. Okay. Now, we're going to approve our minutes from April 16th, our special meeting.
Submove. Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Carries. The minutes from April 9th?
Submove. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know if Phil, I know he was away. I was away for that meeting, but I did read the minutes, and I think there was an issue brought up about ride-alongs, and I request further information because I know that I was the only council person to participate in ride-alongs, and the assertion in the minutes was that there was an evasion of privacy. I know the police officers didn't evade anyone's privacy, and I know me being a part of that ride-along, I didn't evade anyone's privacy. And so I would like to know, who is the complaintant? And, you know, when there is an assertion of evasion of privacy, that is, you know, very, very, that's a touchy-filly situation. So I would like to know, you know, who are they accusing of the evasion of privacy? And so I look forward to that response.
Yeah, I'm waiting to hear back from the police department. It related, Ken, to the fact that there's data that comes in on the mobile data terminals, and there's also radio transmissions, and there's also other complaints from the cell phones, the various, let me put it this way, the various communication systems that are going on within a vehicle, a police vehicle at that time. So I'm waiting to hear back from the police department, because that's where I received it from, as to exactly what the situation is. The insurance aspects of it go to the fact that having civilians riding in town vehicles, and I know you're a council member and whatnot, but there may be some insurance liability issues if there are any situations that develop because of accidents or other things that may be going on. So I'm waiting to get a report back on the insurance aspects of it, too.
So just to follow up with that, the insurance aspect, I did sign the waiver, there is a waiver. On two prior occasions, councilors were invited to participate in the ride-along, one after our orientation in November with Public Works, and then a second one when we told the police department. Third point, and I'm going to just end this, is that that information is freedom of information. So a violation of privacy, unless it's a juvenile, I can go to the police department right now and say, hey, could I see your police response log from June 1st to October 22nd, and they'll publish that. So I just think, I just think it is premature, and if we do the Citizens Academy, and we'll allow citizens to do a ride-along, so, and I've reached out to every other town surrounding town, and they participate, they encourage their council to participate in ride-alongs. So I will, as chairperson of the Public Safety Committee, continue to request ride-alongs, and I will make it public at every council meeting. If I'm denied, I see no reason for a council person to be denied a ride-along as long as we sign the waiver and we're safe. Thank you.
Are there any more discussions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Any extensions?
Any extension? You weren't here. One extension. Councilor McLeary wasn't here. We're going to go ahead and go to council comments. I'm going to start with Councilor Merritt.
I don't think I have anything to add to what I've already said tonight. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Councilor McLeary?
I want to thank you. It's good to be back. I am sorry to the residents of Bloomfield that I took some personal time to take a vacation with my family, but I'm happy to be back. Tomorrow, I will be at 330 Park, as I do every Tuesday, to give out bread to seniors. If you know anyone who's in need of bread, please have them come out and participate in it. I give up my lunch break to do so, and any of the other council members are welcome to join. I think it will be a very, very good thing for us to volunteer to give back to the residents of Bloomfield. Other than that, I was away, and I saw that we cut to police cars. I'm concerned with that, simply because there has been a precedent to try to keep up with the fleet of the police department, and so over the next couple of weeks, I'll be reaching out to my colleagues to see if we could kind of fund one or two vehicles out of our council contingency, because what I don't want to happen is, next year it becomes four vehicles, and then the next year it becomes six vehicles, and the next, you know, we have to bond a million dollars for vehicles. So I would like for us to keep up with the flow of transition. This is very, very critical infrastructure and equipment for our police department. Other than that, residents of Bloomfield, please come out to the town meeting on the budget and provide your feedback. Thank you.
Councilor Marshall Neely?
Thank you. I just wanted to say to all of the presenters that presented tonight that you did a great job in providing us with information with regard to comments from the community. I thought that that was very well perceived, and you did a good job explaining what your concern was. I also would like to make a statement with regard to an event that I attended on Friday. I attend events when I'm invited as a counselor or as someone who wants to come back and help and inform our community with regard to what's going on. So I did attend the event for Dr. Thompson, the superintendent of schools, because I believe that I was supposed to be there. I couldn't stay long, but I want to say that some wise person said to me, you never know who's sitting at the table until you're sitting at the table. So I needed to sit at the table at least for a little while. And I also requested from the superintendent, I wanted to know what the graduation rate is for our students who graduate from Bloomfield High School and attend college. I wanted to know what the college graduation rate is. The data that I received was not what I was expecting, so I'm still turning under, looking under rocks and turning things over because I need to know whether or not our students are prepared to graduate college, not high school, but college. That tells me whether or not we're doing the job that we're supposed to be doing, and it shows me that our money is going to the right places. Just wanted to thank everyone for your time today, and that would be it for me.
Councilor Mann?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the Boy Scout troop for showing up tonight. Very exciting. It's great to see young people who are taking upon themselves a role that sort of prepares them better for later life. And clearly, this is an indication of later life right here, and the fact that these young kids are observing, being put to the task of trying to understand what goes on in their community is a wonderful thing. And in that regard, the Earth Day celebration we had on the weekend is another wonderful thing for our community. Yeah, we haven't had an Earth Day cleanup like we did this weekend for probably 25 years or more, so we're starting this over again, because this council believes in community, community helping each other, community making the demonstration of responsibility, and so forth. So it was a start, and we're going to look to grow that every year hereafter and hope that we can get much more cooperation and participation in the community and from some of our commercial entities, many of whom we spent a lot of time picking up their trash. So thank you. Thank you for listening, and I'll turn it over to my colleague.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to echo what Mr. Mann said about the Boy Scouts coming out tonight. I used to be a part of that organization, and there are a lot of good young men there. They do a lot of good work around the community. They volunteer their time. In addition to that, I also attended the event at the Senior Center to recognize all the seniors who volunteer their time around town, and it was a pleasure to serve them, interact with them, and get to know them. They're the bedrock of our community, the seniors. They're the foundation. I just want to thank them for all their service and time that they put into this town, and just thank you and have a good evening.
So in closing, the Boy Scouts, they're having a donation drive, a clothing and bottle drive... drive on Saturday, May 12th, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM at the Bethel AME Church at 1154 Blue Hills Avenue. Now, a part of Boy Scouts, they get points for different items, clothing, shoes, bedding, towel, accessories, CDs, DVDs. It's spring. I know she took a long time to come, but I believe she's coming, so we can go ahead and do some spring cleaning, bring it to the Boy Scouts, and help them to get their badges. I thank you for your time. Those who are at home and watching, there's a lot of people watching because I hear feedback, good, bad, or indifferent. So, I thank you for your time, for listening. I thank you to those of you who've actually come out to be a part of this council meeting today. I tell you, the council is doing a lot of work, and I thank the town manager and the town staff for their support. We could not do it without them. I heard a quote today that I want to share. The quote said, "Become the kind of person you don't mind spending the rest of your life with." I leave that for us tonight. Become the kind of person you don't mind spending the rest of your life with. Thank you so very much, and good night. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Motion carries.